If I could get your attention, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this regular business meeting of the Steenville City Council here on Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2016. It's 5:30. And say thanks for being here tonight. We've got a great crowd, fairly short agenda, but we're -- that's not because we don't have some great things to talk about. So, um, do I hear music?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's a new feature in the chamber.[40.11][40.11](Laughter). We thought some mood music to kind of get us through the meeting would be, would be nice. And Mr. Finney's over there working on that. There we go. Wow, it's just boring, quiet now. Okay. I'll tell you what, if y'all will stand and join the council, we're going to say the pledge to the United States flag and into the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, tonight we've got Reverend Tom Kons, the pastor at Faith Lutheran here to give the invocation, so. Tom?
The local ministers really thank you for calling us to do this. It's, uh, it really makes, uh, makes those words that we just pledged all the more meaningful. We say "under God," then we should be under God to ask His blessing. So let's bow our heads and do that. Oh, Lord of lords and King of kings, we come today to faithfully execute the sacred trust of governance. We are grateful for the citizens that have chosen us to serve and who themselves also work many hours for the good of this city. We thank you for those here tonight who have come to listen, to learn, to voice their concerns and to report on their service to Steenville. Mercifully forgive us in Christ's name if we have at any time faltered in living up to our responsibility. Show us where we can improve. This evening, help us truly to be servants, working for the good of others and to the glory of your name. As we have already put in long days in our various vocations, give us the energy and strength to be singly focused on the discussions and the decisions before us. As we listen, give us patience, understanding, and an open mind. As we speak, give us words that convey a cooperative and congenial spirit. As we decide the matters before us, let us seek what serves the highest good for the most citizens. And should we find ourselves in the minority on any vote, give us grace to see the wisdom of that decision and to trust that your will is being done. Now, Lord, into your hands we commend ourselves, trusting you to guide us in all things, in Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate that. All right, the next item on the agenda is citizens' general discussion. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and discuss any matter of interest for the council. And so I'll open the floor at this time for anyone that would like to come forward. Okay, seeing none, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We, uh, we are fortunate tonight to be able to get an update on a great initiative at the Bosque River Trail. We have with us this evening, uh, the, the leadership of that initiative and then some, uh, some great participants. And I would like to ask Kathy Haynes and Dr. Jill Burke if they would please come forward and, and offer us an update on some exciting things that are happening on our trail.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to visit with you tonight. We do have some exciting, um, event to share with you. Again, my name is Jill Burke and I'm from Tarleton State University. And in a minute, we'll have Kathy Haynes talk, and she's with Steenville Independent School District. She is the executive director of Human Resources and Student Services. So, that's what we do. We wanted to talk about the Bosque Adventure. And you may not have heard of that before because this is the first year we're going to be doing this event. It is for all fourth graders in Steenville Independent School District, so that's about 275 children that are going to be involved. We hope actually that this becomes an annual event. It will be, it will take place on Friday, September 30th. Most of the activities will be taking place in the morning. We're going to be based at the museum, but obviously, we're going to be on the trail as well. So, one of the main goals is to simply introduce the students to the Bosque River Trail. But what I like about this project is that while we're doing that, they're going to be learning. They're going to learn about the history of Steenville. They're going to learn about the habitat of the area and wildlife in the area. They're going to learn about erosion. There'll be lots of hands-on activities for the students. So it really will be a very interdisciplinary, active learning, and fun day for our students. And again, we're very excited about it. The other piece I wanted to talk about is, that I'm, I'm proud of, is the partnerships that are making this event happen. As you could probably guess, partners include Steenville ISD, and Kathy can talk a little bit more about that, and then Tarleton State University. A couple of key players I want to be sure to recognize, one is Dr. Barbara Bellows, and she is with the Center for Environmental Studies. She's been an active participant of this subcommittee, but she's also given us some funding that is going to support the T-shirts that you'll hear a little bit more about. And then her students are going to be involved as well, her university students. And we also have had great support from Dr. Jeff Breeden, who is with the Department of Wildlife Sustainability and Ecosystem Sciences. I had to peek up my notes for that one. It's a long, long title. But again, his students are going to be preparing and then be involved in teaching the public school students about wildlife. So I think you can see that, that the partnerships are going to make this a very rich and exciting experience. We're working with other partners as well. That's kind of in progress, other departments at Tarleton, civic organizations. So this keeps getting bigger and, and more exciting as we, as we work on it. So, we want you to mark your calendar for Friday, September 30th. We can give you some more details about exactly when and where to be and what you might see, but we hope you will join us. And now I'm going to let Kathy talk a little bit about Steenville's part in this and the T-shirts.
So we decided to work with fourth grade because they, that is a grade where they study the rivers in Texas. And it's, it's also a time when we talk about Texas history. They get real excited about looking at the, the bricks, the Thurber bricks that we have in our community that are really pretty close to Hook. So we thought that would be a great grade to start with because we're already really eager about that. And so, fourth grade, we started working with our third grade students this year to get them to draw pictures that went, that were of the animals around the Bosque River. And so, we kind of did some research about that, what animals were around there, had pictures from down there, because we didn't take them down there yet because that was building to that. They drew all kinds, we had 300-plus pictures because kids, some of them submitted more than one picture for us to look at, the animals. And so we went through a screening process, and we actually decided we had to pick two because we, there were so many great ones that we, we could have picked from. And so we are going to recognize those students tonight, and they actually have the T-shirt that each one of the fourth graders are going to get to wear, um, on the, when we actually go down there on September 30th. And I want to go ahead and introduce them right now. So we'll just call out Jacey Smith. She's right over here. Come over here.[600.04][600.04](Laughter). It's Jacey Smith, and she's --[603.41][603.41](Applause). And Jacey's parents are both here, too. We maybe have them stand, Pam and Brandon Smith.
That's the parents.
And then we also have Devin Arms. And his parents are also here, actually, we have family here for him as well, and that is Emily and Daniel Arms. They're right, you want to stand up, please? There we go.[642.16][642.16](Applause). These are both incoming fourth graders, so they'll be here. The front design is, is Jacey's, and the back design, and we'll flip around where they can all see the back, there it is, is the turtle, is Devin's. And each one of the fourth graders will be getting one of these T-shirts. Wanted to thank Mrs. Stephanie Ashley, where is she, right there making the picture?[668.32][668.32](Laughter). Uh, Miss Stephanie Ashley, she is the principal at Hook Elementary, and she really helped get all of this together and is going to help a lot as we get buses and students all organized because we're going to have them in groups so we can get a lot of kids involved. And then also, would like to thank our superintendent, Mr. Matt Underwood, right back here as well. See him.[689.82][689.82](Applause).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for us? Mark?
Thank you. Um, is there going to be an opportunity for volunteer help at this, or is this all covered?
I'm sure we can use volunteers, yes. We will, got your name already.
Okay.[734.11][734.11](Laughter).
Yes. And, and I also think this will probably be that kind of event that grows every year, and we have new opportunities and new ideas to include in it, so, yes. Metta Collier is also part of our subcommittee, so thanks, Metta, for getting us into this.[752.82][752.82](Laughter) Thank you.
All right, thank y'all very much. Let's give my hand.[757.11][757.11](Applause). You know, it goes without saying that, um, this is a, an example of how this community does things in a special way and is, is focused on the future. And I, I just want to commend the effort. I know Jeremy Allen, I'd also, from the city staff, like to thank, here you are, okay, for your, your help to, to see the city, the county, uh, the school district, Tarleton, working together to educate youth about our river is priceless. And I just commend you for that, and on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for that. We're about to begin, uh, construction of the, the next phase of the trail. That project is set to award here shortly. It's been funded. Uh, and I, I just would remind the citizens of this community that our effort here is not so much about the trail, it's about, um, the people in this community as a, as a place to, to recreate and to gather and to preserve a resource that we can celebrate in our, in our community. And, you know, God gave us this river, and this town wouldn't be here if George B. E. Rath hadn't found it. So we owe it, um, to kind of give back to preserve that for our community. And, um, I, I'll just say this, and I'll be brief with this statement because I, I want, there'll, there'll be more to, to follow on this, but I, we are in the midst of our budget discussions and, and, um, it is very difficult in this, at this time for us to, to do more than we have already done within the resources that are available to us, but we've got to find a way as a community to not stop. Uh, the, the plan includes a total of eight miles. The next phase is over in the Optimus JC Park area. And I'm not, uh, I'm not saying this as a way to, to ask the council to, to try to find another dollar. What I'm doing tonight is, is asking the community to, uh, to consider where we together might proceed in this effort. I'm telling you right now that, that we're going to have a hard time finding dollars to, to continue without your support. And we've got to find a way to finish this. Uh, and it may not come from tax dollars, it may come from community donations in a way that we haven't thought about to this date. But I think tonight proves that this is well worth the effort, and I would encourage us to consider and contemplate how we might bring this to, to a concluding effort. So thank y'all very much for that. All right, to continue in some good news, uh, we've got with us tonight a team from HEB, uh, who's been a major part of this community, and I've got a resolution that I want to read. Tim Boobal is here tonight, uh, with the store director. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir, you said it absolutely correctly. I didn't have to correct you.
Okay, thank you. So, Tim, if you could ask you and your team to just come forward, I've, I've got a proclamation on behalf of the council that I, I would like to read. Proclamation for HEB Day in Steenville. Whereas HEB started more than 100 years ago in a small, family-owned store in the Texas Hill Country, and now serves families in over 300 communities in Texas and Mexico through 96,000 partner employees and 370 stores, and whereas HEB opened in the city of Steenville, August 16th, 1991, and whereas HEB has supported the Steenville community through organizations such as United Way Disabled American Veterans, American Legion, City of Steenville Police and Fire Department, Steenville ISD, Tarleton State University, E. Rath County Humane Society, and the Steenville Chamber of Commerce, and among others, and whereas HEB partners have given countless hours of volunteer time for various community-wide efforts such as tornado relief, July 4th festivities, United Way fundraisers, and others, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Kenny Weldon, Mayor of the City of Steenville, do hereby proclaim August 20, 2016 as HEB Day and encourage all citizens to celebrate the 25th anniversary of our Steenville HEB and recognize the integral part HEB plays in our community and communities throughout Texas. All right.[1068.61][1068.61](Applause).
Tim, on behalf of the community, let me just give it to you and say thanks for all you're doing. And that list is pretty long, and I know there's a lot of other things you'll do in our community to, to help support. So, thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, your, 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 thank you. Mayor Weldon, Mayor Pro Tim Nix, city council staff, thank you so much for having us here this evening. Just wanted to, real quick, I can't let them leave with, until I introduce them. I, just one way to embarrass them, so, uh, wanted to, I'm Tim Boobal, I'm one of the store directors here at the store. We have Shandy Meredith here, our bakery manager. Holly Hodges, our admin. Galen Boone, our drugstore and general merchandise manager. Y'all can wave so they know who I'm talking about.[1129.15][1129.15](Laughter). I've got Ross Billings over here, one of our central checkout managers, and Danny Franco, our produce manager. Uh, just very quickly, wanted to let y'all know the reason why, uh, we, we wanted August 20th to be HEB Day is this here on August 20th, we're going to be doing a celebration at the store. It was that week in 1991 that the store opened. Just wanted to let everyone know, we'll have some free food and drink. HEBuddy will be there, please bring the kids. We'll have some games going on. A lot of this will be in the parking lot and in the store as well. We've been doing a lot of sampling, a lot of festivities going on. We'll have the, I'm told, we will have the very large motorized shopping cart, car thing on display.[1172.28][1172.28](Laughter). So I'm, I'm told I'm getting that for that weekend, so come on out and see that. I'm hoping to park it in front of the store. So, I just want to let y'all know what's going on, and thank you so much for this proclamation and for supporting us as well, so, y'all have a great evening. All right, thank you.[1186.58][1186.58](Applause). And I have to get them all back to the store to sell some groceries, so thank y'all very much. Thank you. And Tim, you can tell Mr. Butts we said hi. Look forward to seeing him soon.
I will. Yes, I will tell him.
Okay. All right, uh, next on the agenda, we have our annual report from Special, or Specialized Billing and Mr. Bruce Glover.
Thank you, Mayor Weldon, and the city council members, and the citizens of Steenville. We're happy to be back again this year. We're very thankful that the city has allowed us to be your billing service for, I think, probably over 10 years now, 12? I'm not that old.[1246.76][1246.76](Laughter). We're, we have seen a little bit of a shift from last year, but I think we're still on track as far as our, our revenue is, is patterned, has been pretty consistent, except for last year. I wish I had some answers on that. Y'all have some reports that we've sent over. There's nothing out of the u, unusual that's been happening, other than just the normal turmoil with the healthcare industry. You are going through a Medicare/Medicaid revalidation process right now, which the chief and I have been working on, and that's been really, really, really fun. And in order to, this is basically, we, this has to do with fraud prevention. The government has put in, uh, numerous safeguards to ensure that you're not committing fraud, and we want to ensure you that our company is doing everything in our power to make sure that every claim that is submitted on behalf of the city of Steenville is done 100% to current CMS and Medicaid regulations. And I would like, there's one thing on this report you may not see, but if you'll look at reverse adjustments, there's one credit in here for $51, and that has to do with, we make sure that what we bill out is correct, and you're not having to reimburse CMS for claims that you shouldn't have been paid for. We have put policies and procedures in place over the last, uh, probably five years to help prevent this. It's something that is required, and we are on top of it, and I think it reflects in our, um, services that we do provide, that you're, we're not having to call you up every month saying you need to send a check back to Medicare. Uh, you're not being audited by Medicare or Medicaid, so we are making sure that we are doing things according to, uh, state and federal regulations. I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions from the council. Uh, you'll have to excuse me, I am running a little bit problem with a call, but I'll, I'll do my best to holler as loud as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Sven?
The numbers crunchers, I apologize.
That's okay.
Looking at our net write-offs, we've written off, if, on the bottom of the last page, it doesn't have the total of write-offs.
Yeah, and, and I apologize for that. The problem is, and the chief and I noticed that when I met with him earlier, the, the column width wasn't loud, wasn't wide enough to laugh, but I do have those numbers if you want.
So what is that number, then?
The total write-offs for last year were, uh, right at 1.6999737, so almost 1.7 million.
Of that, how much is, if you look at Medicare, which is probably, is kind of the standard that everybody uses for what reimbursement is, if we look at Medicare, but you look at the number of what we're billing versus what they are allowing for payment, why do they discount so much? Is it because we're overcharging?
Well, the, the problem is, we're not overcharging, is when you, you want to make sure that, we do itemize billing. And the reason we itemize billing is to maximize the, the return that you're going to get on your transport. When we bill, we bill Medicare and we bill private insurance the same way. So whether it's a private, whether it's Blue Cross Blue Shield claim, or if it's Medicare claim, it's going to be billed out at the same rates, the same procedures, and there's many items on there that Medicare will not pay for, and we know that they're automatically going to get denied.
And that's the 397,000, I'm assuming?
No, I'm sorry, no, the, the total write-offs for Medicare for last year was 1.1 million, almost 1.2 million. But the deal is, you want to make sure that you're billing everybody fairly and equally. You don't want to set two rates for, say like Medicare patients, and you don't want to set a rate for Medicaid patients, and you don't want to bill private insurance at a different rate because that's illegal. You have to make sure that you're billing things accordingly, and you're billing everybody the same way.
But they discount differently?
They discount differently, just like Medicaid will as well.
It looks like the Medicaid with the new managed care, that the payments are about the same percentage as what Medicare, Medicaid versus Medicare.
Correct.
Okay, so the managed care companies are paying well, then?
They are. Um, we're, we're having a lot of problems with the managed cares. And it's, it's just, they're, they handle things differently. We, it's kind of long, and it's, I don't want to really draw it out. It takes a little bit more work to get them to pay than it does with Medicaid. It's about like.
Clean claim, is it clean claims issue, or?
No, it's not, it's, it's just the way they process things. Uh, you know, to give you an example, um, the city of Steenville, I had to re, uh, renew their TDH certification with, with TDH. Medicaid, we ended up into a, a period where, um, the HMOs were not paying because they didn't have a copy of the current TDH on file, and the problem was, uh, TDH hadn't even, hasn't even, hasn't even sent it, sent it to, uh, Steenville yet. And they won't take one, it's going to expire within 30 days. So what happened was, you get into a, their, their way they do thing is, I think they drag it out, they're paying as long as possible. So we ended up going into a payment hold period, and it wasn't just Steenville, it was every Medicaid provider that we deal with, because TDH couldn't provide those documents, you know, when they wanted, when the, the HMOs wanted them.
Mr. Sven, what, what, he's talking about, uh, when we filed for our new license, TDH just sends you a letter and says, you're good, we'll give you license to, when you do, Medicare will take that letter.
Medicare, I thought Medicaid in this case.
No, Medicaid, yeah, Medicaid wouldn't take the letter.
They won't take the letter.
They, you had to have a copy of the actual certificate, so, I mean, that's just, yeah, that's just the way they do, they do things. It, it just takes longer to get them to pay, but they are paying, and they're going to pay at the same rate.
Well, here's what I'm asking, because I'm with the statewide Managed Care Advisor Committee for HHSC, and that's the issue, clean claims is the number one reason they're being kicked out now. And issues like this, for example, TDH would have had that number on their file, all they have to do is look at their website.
They won't.
So, I understand that, but that's kind of issues we can talk to the state of Texas about. That's, that's inappropriate for them to do that.
Well, they'll go back and get that.
Oh, I understand that. If it's cash flow issue at that point.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the problems we've had. It's, it, we, it does get recouped, but it's just a matter of their processing. Um, you know, it's, you know, their, 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 um, system is updated every Friday, and, um, we've had HMOs that will request a letter, um, stating that, uh, say like the city of Steenville's TPI number is active and current. Uh, Tim, uh, Medicaid, TMHP will not issue those letters, period. And they tell everybody you have to go to the database, and it'll show you because it's updated. Well, you, you can't force the, the Medicare, uh, programs, you can't force them to go look at that data, and that's the only way they can, they can get it, is from the TMHP database.
What's the number one reason there's such a difference in how much we collected this year versus last?
We talked to the chief about this, and the two things that we've really, that I've noticed and the chief didn't, and also the owner of the company, is there was a reduction in our Medicare, um, revenue, which I'm not really sure why. The call volume was actually less last year than this year, or the, we're going back one more year.
You're talking about call volume for Medicare?
The call, I'm talking about the call volume overall. In order to, to really know why, we'd have to go in and do a detailed analysis, because your private pay went up about 20,000 the previous year, your private insurance claims or payments went up an additional amount, but the Medicare came down. So I don't know if there was something that was happening in the community as far as, um, I don't know, you had an influx of people coming in that had more private insurance than they did Medicare. Um, I, I don't really know. I mean, we would actually have to go back and look at individual calls and see what the pattern was there. I, I don't think, I think it was a, an anomaly, because we're back on track as far as the current, the, the budget, the numbers for this coming year, um, they're going to be about the same as they were for this, this last budget year.
Mr. Sven, I've, I've been on the phone with him, the owner of the company, we've looked at every, like Bruce said, we've looked at everything, and, you know, we had a tremendous amount of, there's all kinds of theories, we had a tremendous amount of pressure to come in. Mr. Saven, I've, I've been on the phone with him, the owner of the company, we've looked at every, like Bruce said, we've looked at everything, and, you know, we had a tremendous amount of, there's all kinds of theories, we had a tremendous amount of freshmen coming in last year, and, and it seemed like we went to Charleston a lot, of course, those are all insurance and private pay, but our private pay was up for some reason last year, we, we don't know why, and I think it's gonna take more than one year, we figure.
Well, you would think with Obamacare, and everybody's supposed to be insured now by January of last year, you'd think we'd have more insurance claims.
But, and, and as I, another theory, another theory is that this year, we have less insurance claims, but figured out they could pay the penalty cheaper than they pay the insurance, so, so, you know, there's all kinds of theories on this, it's gonna take more than a year.
So how much do we discount for private pay people that is out of the pocket? You know, we go pick somebody up, and they say, I can't pay the bill. That was one of the things we talked about last year, there's a, since somebody had a $500 bill or a $1,000 bill, and they say, I can't afford it, and we don't do anything to deal with that, we just say, okay.
Well, and when people, in most cases, what people do is, when they say, I don't, if they don't have any insurance, if they say they don't have any insurance, we'll reduce it down to Medicare rates, but what Medicare would pay, which is about 400 and, 400 to 500 dollars.
So it's about, what, 20%, 25% of the actual bill?
Oh, it could be more than that, because some of your transports could be 200 or 3000 dollars. If you get into a cardiac patient, I mean, you're, you're looking, it could be in excess of 3000 dollars.
But you said 400 dollars, what the typical one was?
That's what Medicare will reimburse, between 400 and 500 dollars.
So the discount is about 2000 dollars a call?
Correct.
Is, is the reason that Medicare does that? I mean, if you look at, what we're saying is, fair market for this service, if you take the control allowance out and net charges, we say we, we provided 2.7 million dollars in ambulance services, and we collected, how much? 410,000 bucks, is that right?
Uh, for Medicare?
Grand total, total collections were?
For Medicare last year?
587,000?
Uh, Medicare last year was.
So what we're doing is, we're discounting basically 20, 80% of the cost of our services, so is, is that typical in the state to do that, for that much of a discount?
For Medicare?
Yeah, I'm talking about all services, private pay, insurance, Medicare/Medicaid, et cetera. I mean, if you look at, we collected, it looks like 587,000 bucks. After you do the allow, we'll take the Medicare disallowed out, you got net charges of 2.7 million bucks, so we got 600,000 dollars in collection, 2.7 million dollars, which means we wrote off 2.1 million bucks.
Well, you're gonna have, you have to look at each one of these payers separately, because each one of them fall under different regulations. Medicare has a certain rate, which they will pay, they only pay for certain things, and we know that going into it. Yes, we do bill more than what we know they're gonna pay, just like your mileage, you know, your, if their mileage, if they're only gonna reimburse 12 cents per mile, we bill 21, because we know insurance, private insurance will pay 21.
Sure.
The billing the private insurance in full amount helps offset the cost of what Medicare and Medicaid will not pay. Medicaid pays even less. The deal with your private insurance is, and I can say this for a fact, because it's affected me this last year, is policies are changing. Obamacare is gonna get even worse, because next year, they're even gonna be taking more away from what they will reimburse you for Medicare. In order to pay for Obamacare, you have to, they're taking away from Medicare payments. Private insurance, your deductibles are going up, your copays are going up.
Do we collect copays and deductibles?
If we, if we can, but when you're talking to a lot of people, they can't afford it, because.
And how do we determine that they can't afford it? What, what's the rate that we decide to have? Is that a department-led decision, or you decide?
It's gonna, it's gonna be, usually it's in, within our office, and if it's something we can't handle in our office, then we'll refer it to the chief. We don't refer them all to the chief, because if we did, that's all he would be doing. But very few get referred to him. Normally what happens is, is we, we pretty much, you're just gonna, basically, you're gonna end up accepting what your private insurance will pay, and that's usually about 80%. We do not bill, we do not submit the bill within 24 hours, like a lot of billing services tell you to do, because that way you can get your money quicker. The problem is, and give you an example, I just had quadruple bypass this year.
What's your heart?
And I'm doing good, I have really poor insurance, thank you Obamacare, my out-of-pocket was always supposed to be 4,500, well, now we're up to 7,000, because I didn't go buy ambulants, but the deal is, I'm still having to pay those bills to the hospital, because I have to meet, I had to meet my deductible, which was supposed to have been 4,500, and after that, then it would pick it up 100%. Well, it doesn't pick it up 100%. We don't send that bill out until we make, try to make sure that the hospital is gonna eat that deductible, and let the hospital be the bad guy to go after the patient, because you don't want to be the bad guy. I'm sorry, the hospital is gonna go after them no matter what. So is their cardiologist, or stasiologist, x-ray, they don't have a problem, you know, filing liens against them and renting their credit, those type of things, and I know the city of Stevenville's not gonna want to do that.
So I, let me, let me just interrupt here for a second, and I appreciate this conversation, because Mr. Saven's bringing up a very valid point, that we are basically subsidizing this program at the order of 2.1 million dollars, and if there's a way for us to reduce that cost.
Or increase revenue.
Or increase the revenue, we need to figure out a way to do that.
The short answer, the short answer is, if, to Mr. Saven's question, if we compare, and I have, if we compare our write-offs to communities that have a similar demographic, where we're handling 60 to 70% Medicare/Medicaid patients, we're involved.
Okay.
We average about 60%.
So, so the other thing that I'm hearing here, excuse me, is that we, we're being held victims to a federal program that is being, that, that's being, the burden's being placed on, on a local government, and so we, we need to figure out what to do with that. And you're on the state board, I know you can provide a voice for us, but, you know, I, I don't know if there's something we as a council can do to help, but I think this is an issue that, that citizens should, you know, speak to their, their representative about, and make them aware that the burden of this system is being placed on your local government, and it's 2 million dollars we can't use to fix roads or sewer because of it, or, or to provide other firefighters in, on our, into our, our fire department. I mean, Chief, how many firefighters could you add for 2 million dollars? A lot.
A lot.
So, I, I mean, that's the issue. So, I, I, I think this has been good discussion, I, I just want to, in the deference of time, is there something else we need to go over tonight?
I just have one more question. How much of our billing is non-inversion versus emergency, our costs?
Technically, it's all emergency.
I understand.
We only respond to add 1-1. Now, under, under the current Medicare/Medicaid system, a lot of stuff that we consider, we as people consider emergency to not consider, is a broken arm an emergency, depends on what your arm, and, and, but that's not the way Medicare and Medicaid looks at it, so.
But now there's also some transports at times, going from nursing home to hospital, et cetera, and those, or so-and-so has a point, we don't do any of that.
No.
We don't do any transfers.
We want all our customers to have 1-1.
All, all a caller, 9-1-1.
And, and to give, to hit real quick, I want to hit this real quick, just because you're dispatching an emergency call, and the person thinks it is an emergency, we run into this quite a bit with Medicare patients. Medicare has certain, Medicare has certain guidelines on what they consider emergency is.
That's why I was asking the question, how much of that?
And basically, you have to be dying or bleeding to death before Medicare will pay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, and we're glad to see you recovering, maybe your pocketbook not so much.
I, as long as you live.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
Mayor, I believe we accept Mr. Glover's report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Harrison, to approve the report for specialized billing as presented. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If all is opposed, our unanimous approval of that report, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Stevenville Type and Economic Development Authority, CETA, Executive Director John Hubbard.
Good evening, council. Good seeing you. Last month, we had a little bit of a glitch in our, our, I guess you're gonna call it our conflict of interest policy. There were just a couple of questions that the council had about the wording on it. So at your direction, we went back and we sought legal counsel, one from Mr. Thomas, and also from the city's EDE, Economic Development Attorney, Jeff Moore, to, to look at that. In addition, we had Ms. Shelby, what issue? Ms. Shelby Slosson, also an attorney, actually looked at it as well, and they came to the conclusion that basically, it was, it was in pretty good shape. There was some formatting that was done, but the policy remains intact. Now, I'm gonna go in and call Ms. Slosson up here, so she can have maybe answer to the questions that we might have, she's looking at it like, what? What's this?
Okay, so basically, you, you brought back to us the, the, the content as presented, but we've now had legal review.
Yes.
So I'll just open the floor for any council questions about the policy for you. John, did you have anything?
I want to just bring up one thing, and that's what you brought up at the, at the board meeting, about the wording.
My understanding is, there was a question about the phrase in the policy that says, excess benefit transaction, and I'm sorry, I, I wasn't here that night, maybe I misunderstand the question that came up. But I did want to clarify that when that was drafted by Mr. Cook, he included that, it's a term of art used by the Internal Revenue Service when they evaluate transactions that a charitable organization is entering into, and I don't profess to be an expert in tax law by any means, but I do recognize that in contracts, as a trigger, that this particular kind of transaction, we would want disclosed. What's involved there is situations where an interested party, like a director, somebody that has a voting right within the organization, might be receiving a benefit from that organization, but not paying full market value, well, the IRS wants to know. So do y'all. So we are including that phrase in the policy, that if there is any kind of interaction going on between a board member and CETA that might be considered by the IRS as an excess benefit transaction, then that needs to be disclosed. So that's where that phrase comes from in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Then I'll consider a motion to approve the policy.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt the CETA conflict of interest policy as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. McCormick, to approve the, uh, CETA conflict of interest policy as presented, so, any discussion? All right, if not, we'll proceed to vote all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our unanimous vote approves that conflict of interest policy. So thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is to consider resolution 2016 R-09 approving submission of a grant application for body camera program, and I'll ask Chief King to come forward.
Mayor, council. Back in February, we, we spoke about this program that night, and at that time, there weren't any requirements for resolutions or anything, but since then, the governor's office has asked, so just kind of a quick review. This allows us to complete our body worn camera program. Total amounts, 27,912, does require 25% match. Our district attorney, Mr. Alan Nash, and our county attorney, Ms. Lisa Pence, have both committed to produce about 2,000 each out of, out of their offices to help us cover that match, and we just kind of need this resolution to send to the governor's office, and that's one of the final pieces to getting this program done, and getting us on the road to getting that completed.
Any questions for Chief King? Y'all currently use body cameras now?
Yes, sir.
How many are your officers, percentage-wise, 100%?
100%, but currently, they, they trade off. So what this program is, allows a completion where we can assign them to each person as, as an individual piece of equipment.
What, what do you plan, you plan on keeping the equipment you currently have then?
Yes, sir, this is, this is in addition to that.
In addition.
Yes, sir.
Fair enough. All right, anything else? All right, thank you, then we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 2016 R-09 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McCormick, seconded by Mr. Trussell, to approve resolution 2016 R-09 approving submission of a grant application for body camera program. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's a unanimous approval of resolution 2016 R-09. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider approving the sale of Brian Gailey, 12,000 square foot parcel of real property out of blocks 13 and 14, Southside Edition, city of Stevenville.
Mayor and council, several months ago, Mr. Gailey approached the city about buying this little strip of property. It is in the area of Cage and Lillian Street, and then bounded on the, on the west or north by the railroad tracks. Mr. Gailey owns all the property on either side of the, of the strip in question, and he's seeking to consolidate the whole thing. He's had an appraisal done on it, the appraisal came back at 6,000 dollars, and it's, there's, there's also been a, a survey of it, and we do have easements running through there that we would have to maintain, that we would have to retain, but other than that, I, I see no reason to deny the sale. I believe Mr. Gailey's intent is to build on that property.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Mr. Bridges, did, did the city foot the cost for the survey and the appraisal, or was that Mr. Gailey's expense?
Mr. Gailey paid for the appraisal, Mr. Thomas had requested a survey done as well, and the city paid for that cost.
Okay, so we split the expense with him up to this point?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Then with, with no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
May I approve the sale of this parcel of property, Brian Gailey, as presented in the agenda packet?
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Harrison, to approve the sale of the 12,000 foot parcel of real property out of blocks 13 and 14, Southside Edition, as described. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? It's a unanimous approval of the, the sale as described. All right, next we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask to hold item B from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna pull item B from the consent agenda, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McClain, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 11B. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item 11B. So item 11B is to consider approval of a bid award for 2016 Tarleton Methodist Branch Sanitary Sewer Relief Line, and we've got the information in our packet with the bid information, but, yeah. Mr. Williams, if you want to just give us a summary of the, of the project.
We went ahead and took the liberty of including a location map for this discussion purpose. By the way, great job with the, with the TV screens, makes it much easier to see. The purpose of this project is to install, when you see this yellow line, a 21-inch sewer main from the Tarleton campus, all the way down to the city park, which is where the 30-inch outfall, outfall line then runs to the treatment facility. The expansion at Tarleton, and you can see the lines that Tarleton has put in, the blue line and the red line, there's a, I believe that's a 15-inch line and a 12-inch line. If you'll notice where they connect, the existing line there that the city has is a 10-inch line. So we know that there's, it's already undersized. Last year, the council did commission an analysis of those sanitary sewer lines, and it came back that the capacity of the downstream system is 85% under capacity for the projected flows from the Tarleton expansion. That existing 12-inch line will carry about 1.75 million gallons per day, and with the existing flows and the projected flows from the current, I'm sorry, the projected flows for the residence halls at Tarleton. for the residence halls at Tarleton, they're projecting to flow about 3.25 million gallons. Now, what you have in front of you is the project that stemmed from that analysis that shows the 21-inch line. And sorry, it shows the route of the 21-inch line as well. We did receive two bids on this project, and I think that speaks volumes all by itself. This is a very good project, and the fact that we only got two bids tells me that contractors are just quite, not quite as hungry as what I think they normally are. If you look at the bids, there's approximately a million dollar spread in those bids. I think probably what happened is the local contractor here, B&amp;L Construction, we just caught them at a good time going from one project to the next. It almost looks like the bid from North Texas Contracting was, in effect, a courtesy bid, saying, yes, we'll be happy to do the project for you, but we're going to need some additional resources to do that. I'm glad to answer any questions you have about that.
Yeah, so Nick, on this, I know we talked at length, and of course, it's been quite some time ago, but we've been using that $1.5 million estimate for months and months. And this came back at just under 2. Was there anything discovered during the engineering work that was done, the design work that was done, that would point to why the bid came back higher than?
When we first did the analysis of the downstream system, it was a rough, it was a rough cost estimate. Now, when we got to the actual engineering of it, yes, there were a few items that we added into it, and that, for instance, because of the depth of the line and some of the lines that it was crossing, in other words, the water lines that were going near, were going to be damaged extensively. Because those lines are bad to start with, rather than repair old lines, we put in quantities to replace those two water lines. I believe that's green and race. So as you can see, it made up about 8 percent of the bid.
The water lines did?
The water lines made up about 8 percent of the total bid, so not a lot. The other items, the individual line items, that were high, some of them included street repair. The fact that we had to make some 90-degree bends with a 21-inch line necessitated the use of larger-than-average manholes, and that was part of the design process. I won't belabor the point, but your standard manhole has a four-foot diameter. Well, when you put a line that's almost two feet in diameter on one side, and then take another two feet out of the other side, you almost have no manhole left. So we had to make those bigger, that's an additional cost. Crossing the railroad, in discussions with them, we had to add an excess length of steel casing, as well as crossing Washington Street.
Any other questions?
I would have just one more. In your memo here, you indicate that after consultation with the finance department, this project could be funded through reserves, and I think Walter mentioned last night, maybe some, also some cash flow. Could you just address that just briefly?
Sure. And I don't pretend to be Walter Wood, but, yeah, there is a $2.7 million fund balance available for this, so it can be paid for with cash. In my discussions with Mr. Wood, we understand that, we anticipate rather, that that $2 million balance will be made up within two years, and approximately seven months of that will be under construction. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, I got a couple. Why did the contractor that's doing all the infrastructure work at Tarleton not bid on this? You would think with their mobilization that they would be very competitive.
That is North Texas Contracting. That is the subcontractor for Imperial.
The $2.9 million bid is already mobilized.
Yes, sir.
And they came in $1 million higher.
And that's, it goes back to what I was saying, they're just not as hungry. They don't need the work, they have a $26 million contract with Tarleton. We have several utility contractors that bid on these as a general rule, and some of them, like Bowles Construction, they didn't even bother to bid it. When I called them, they said, hey, you know, I estimated eight jobs last week, so we're turning down work.
Okay. The second question I had, is there any state or federal funds available to support this project? And what are we doing to garner those?
Because of the urgency of the project, we were not able to meet the timelines for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which would be the most applicable for what we're servicing here. So while there are funds available, there are not funds available within the specific timeline that we had to get these out. I will be having conversations with the Water Development Board to see if we can, in any way, come up with reimbursement funding.
Okay. So can we make that a matter of record, that we're going to pursue reimbursement for this project from the state, and there'll be a report back to the council on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be glad to do so.
All right.
How much would, if we had applied for the grant, how about the potential reimbursement?
There are no grant funds available.
The project you mentioned, if you'd have been, had more time?
The Clean Water State Revolving Fund is a loan program. Right now, their interest rates are between .5 and .6 percent, but it does require environmental reviews, public hearings, notices, and so it is not a quick process at all. That's one of the applications we're looking at for the East Side Sewer.
I'm assuming some of this is type coming out of water funds, so I assume, is that right?
And when you say there's two, five in reserves, is that just waters, I mean, sir, is that both enterprise?
Both of them, $2.46 million if they reserve.
All right, the other question I was going to ask is, does the award of this, I mean, it's obvious we've got a problem here, because we've got a pipe that'll handle 1.7, and we've got a flow that's 3.2.
Yes.
So when did we know that this was a problem?
When I asked for the analysis last year.
Last year?
Yes. We received the plans on July 12th. My staff and I turned those plans around, I'm sorry, July 8th, and we turned those around to bid and advertise those on the 13th.
Okay. All right, so we've had to really expedite this because of the amount of construction that has gone on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a two-year project? It's going to take two years?
No, ma'am.
How long?
Probably seven months. That's what we have listed in the contract.
But those dorms are coming online in the next month or two?
That's correct.
So how's that going to affect us over the next seven months?
Well, we don't know yet. We know that when they are at full capacity and we hit peak flows, there will be instances where we may have to respond and isolate an incident.
No flush parties?
That's correct. But that's why we started this process a year ago.
Did we approach Tarleton?
I'm wondering the same thing.
Do we approach Tarleton, they help? I mean, this is primarily because of growth at Tarleton. Have we approached them about participation?
Yes, we have.
Right, and I can speak to that. I mean, I personally met with the president to talk about how Tarleton might be able to participate in this. He went to the trouble to actually go to the state, to the A and P system, to ask the question about their ability to participate, and they are unable to do that. I mean, that's one of the reasons why our rate structure for utilities needs to reflect our ability to recoup capital replacement costs going forward. It currently does not as well as it should. So there's a lot of things that we're learning here that we need to, you know, pay attention to. But, I mean, the good thing is, we've got a project here that's going to be done in seven months, and call it lucky, but one of those residence halls is, they're not, it's not going to come online in August. It's actually going to be January before it's completed. The Traditions North Building, they've stopped all construction on that building to get the others online, and so we'll have a little bit of wiggle room here, maybe, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I approve that we award the bid for the Methodist Branch Sewer Replacement as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. McClintock to approve award of the bid to 1.988711 for the Tarleton Methodist Branch Sanitary Sewer Relief Project line. Any discussion?
Isn't this something that we really should have a little more discussion on? I mean, if not even tonight, in our workshop meeting?
All right, if no other questions or comments, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed?
No.
All right, so the record showed that there was eight ayes and one nay, being the nay being Mr. Harrison, and then that motion carries with approval of the Tarleton Methodist Branch Sanitary Sewer Relief Line project. Okay, we'll proceed then to the city administrators' report.
Mayor, I want to ask Assistant Chief Halsey to come up to the podium and provide counsel and our citizens with some information on an event that's about to occur.
Mayor, council, on Thursday at 7:00, we're going to have a Pokemon Go Safari for the community. We thought it'd be a good idea, and it kind of caught fire on us, so we're going to have a pretty big event, we're expecting around 300 to 400 folks, maybe even more, with Mr. Allen in the Parks Department. We're going to have water along the trail for everybody. We'll use the Bosque River Trail downtown area and the city park. Any questions?
Mr. Warren, you got your Pokemon card going?
Thank you.
Take your grandkids out there.
All right.
I'd walk up to the river.
Yeah, take your kids and your grandkids out there, it'll be a good time.
All right, what else you got?
And other than that, you can see the list of upcoming meetings, and it looks like what's on the next page. August 18th, Park and Rec Advisory Board, August 19th, Airport Advisory Board, and August 23rd, a special council meeting for a public hearing on the budget. That's all.
Okay, thank you, our council. Mark?
Well, Mr. Mayor, in light of recent events, I'm going to pull a Paul Harvey and do partly personal here. I'd like to speak to Chief King. Chief King, I'd like for you to take to your entire team my thanks and gratitude for the work that they do, day in and day out. You guys stand in a solid line between my family and chaos. I could never repay you for that. But what I can do is, if you have something, as a resident of Steenwell, that I can help you with, come to me. I'll have your back the way you've got my back. So just tell everybody for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you.
Well, if you haven't had an opportunity to go over the library, I wanted to thank the Steenwell Leadership Class, the recent leadership class, put in an amphitheater at the library outside, so you might want to go look at that. I want to thank TechStar Ford for another great summer of concerts. And I had on my list, kudos for the Chamber of Commerce for organizing the event for Thursday night, looking for Pokemon. I've not done it, but I think it sounds like fun. And I also had on my list to thank the policemen during this difficult time in our country and let you know how much we do appreciate you. Thank you.
You wish to say? No. No comments?
This weekend, I had a very important event, very rewarding event, that happened for myself and my family. And that would not have taken place without our Parks and Rec Board and everything that we do down there, Jeremy and those guys. But this weekend, we went down to, took my son down to McAllen, Texas to compete in the TAF Games of Texas. We participated in the state track meet and the shot put. I think there's some kids that deserve some recognition here. Hilton DeBoer placed his third-place medalist in the 1600. He also qualified in the 400. Elsa DeBoer, his sister, had her personal best in the 800. Xavier Garcia and Kylie Chaplin qualified, but she did not participate. Big thank you to Coach Marquise Thomas, and I want to tell you, Jeremy, Marquise is one great guy. I have never seen a coach that was as sincere and dedicated with kids. He did a really good job. He had a couple assistants, they were great. Of course, Parks and Rec. And actually, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Brad Keith with a flash, because those guys have covered this. This is, we stumbled into this whole process. I mean, we did not even know that it existed. We were looking for something to do, maybe go to a couple of track meets and that kind of thing over the summer, and we need to continue to build this program. We need to have meets here. If Santo, Texas can have three meets a year, we can have it here, because I'm going to tell you what, there's some good economic opportunity. Not only is it healthy for those kids, it, there is, I mean, when you go to these meets, just like, it might be a little bit overreaching, but there were 7,500 kids down at McAllen, 7,500 athletes. And even the smaller meets, going to restaurants, hotels, so I think that's something that we really need to consider. And I also want to congratulate my son that, two months ago, he started throwing a brick in the backyard. He made it, we were only wanting to go to a couple Tier 3 track meets, qualified at the regionals for state, and he made, he was a state finalist and brought home, he had the seventh-best throw in the state of Texas with some pretty stellar athletes, so I'm very proud of him. So let's just try to keep up the good work.
Mr. Nick?
No.
Chair?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Chair.
Okay. All right, well, I want to thank the city staff for their preparation for tonight, the citizens that came out and participated in the meeting. I want to thank the council for your great work, your service to this community. Tom, you reminded us in your prayer today of why we're here, and we really appreciate that. The council is in the midst of our budget discussions and preparation for providing that for public comment, and that'll be coming out soon, so just ask for your continued prayers for us throughout that process. Also, we just want to thank the first responders in this community, the fire and police. Y'all put the uniform on every morning, not knowing what's going to happen that day, and we are so blessed to have you serving this community each and every day. So thank you all very much. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
All right. We adjourned at 6:38. Thank you all.
That was fast.